Before we call the meeting to order, we have a public hearing concerning an application for a specific use permit to allow multi-use zoning for residential manufacturing and commercial on Kearns, OT block fifty-seven lots five through eight, located at two oh four southeast first street in the city of Kearns. This was submitted by Joe McFarland. Joe, you want to tell us exactly what you've got planned over there?
Well, it's zoned for commercial right now, and I'm wanting to put a small business on it, a machine shop. But I'm wanting to build the machine shop at the back of the lot. I do a few things. I'm an insurance adjuster, but it's very seasonal, so sometimes I'll be gone for months on end, but there are many, many months where I won't be. You know, when the work's slow, I would like to be able to operate my machine shop, you know, just a job shop. I do a lot of work for Crestline and Guardian, just all the industries here in Forscana and Ennis and Streitman. But I'd like to have it multi-used where I would have the option one day if I wanted to, or if someone else wanted to, to be able to build a house on the street side of the property with the shop at the backside of the property. That's really all I'm wanting.
Everybody has any comments about your time?
I do. My name is Krista Conley-Deeby. I have lived here in Kearns since two thousand and ten. Prior to that, I lived out in Powell for about five or six years. I know a few of you all in here, and I live right there at two-ten southeast first, where he's saying backed up, that's my back fence. That's my house. I work for the state of Texas. I work from home. There is no way I could work with a machine shop next door to me. I am begging and pleading you all, please do not allow them to rezone that. Eva and Jesus, who really own the property, they got Joe to come up here and petition because they did before, and it was declined. They've already purchased the property across the other side of my street on Sinclair and have already moved, are starting to repair that old house, which that's fine, and they've moved in two big sheds behind it. Looks like it's going to be ramped up for them to have multi-dwelling units, possibly granny shacks, tiny homes. I don't know, but I am just pleading, that is my home, that is my sanctuary, my husband's retired, and I just don't want that beside me, please. I beg of you. I pay my taxes, I'm never late, and I just plead with you all, please don't let it happen. I mean, residential, he's got that residential lot on Sinclair. I don't know why he would want to put a house where the business is.
I don't have a residential lot on Sinclair. But this lot is already zoned commercial.
The lot he's talking about is zoned commercial.
Well, that's fine, but he's talking about putting a res- asking for it to be turned residential as well.
Multi-use.
Right.
I have no idea how many letters were sent out. I've gotten sick fat.
And all of them are no, or at least the top three ones there are, because those are my neighbors that are disabled who could not bring them up here.
There's one in favor. Five of them, if y'all like to read through them, read the comments.
And again, there's a disabled gentleman on one side of me, there's a disabled gentleman across the street from me, he's a disabled vet.
He has every right to put a machine shop, because the property is zoned commercial.
That's fine, I just don't want it to be a house.
Wait, 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 let me finish. What he's asking for is to change it to multi-use where he could put a house. So...
Well, my question is, is why did Jesus come up to my door, ask my husband to step outside and say, okay, we're going up and we're gonna petition it again? What is in favor for Jesus then? Why is Joe doing it? Because everybody turned Jesus and even down the last time? I don't know. All I'm saying is he's not being upfront about what everything's gonna be over there.
Well, then he, if he doesn't do what he says, he gets in legal trouble. If he tries to build a house or own a commercial lot, then it becomes a legal matter. Anybody else? Any questions?
Do you know exactly?
We are talking around the corner, right?
Yeah.
It's not the corner.
Eddie's auto shop lot, right?
Yeah, it's kinda in the middle of that lot on the north side.
It's an empty lot next to the corner.
It's, there's a house on the east corner and then Eddie's.
And then Eddie's auto body was over here.
Northwest corner, and this is kinda in between.
Okay.
Butts up against my back fence of my house, my house line.
From the side fence or the back fence?
The side fence of my house.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's my yard, yeah.
Yeah.
It's where my main yard is.
How loud would it be?
It's just a, I do not want any employees. There's not gonna be forty men in there. This is a one-man shop.
And you do the work inside or outside?
All inside.
Inside?
All inside. Insulated building, insulated doors with probably central heat and air. I don't like being hot, and I don't like being cold.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, just...
And when you said the back of the lot, are you talking next to the fence, the side of the fence?
Yeah, next to the alley.
Yeah. Well, I live on the other side.
Kitty corner from yours, yeah.
No, yeah, kinda, part of it's behind, part of it's behind the Wharton's.
But it's already zoned for commercial. He can put his business there.
Yes.
Right now. He's just asking to build his house there also, so it would just be another house.
All right. Not necessarily his house.
A house.
Is he building a house or some house?
At some house.
Well, I would build a house there, but I may sell it, or I may have the building there and sell the building and the lot at some point, or I'd like it to where if someone else wanted to build a house, they would have the ability to do so.
But I mean, are you coming to counsel for yourself, or are you coming to counsel for other people?
No, for me. This is me, my...
But he's gonna sell it to Jesus and Eva. That's, I want us to be clear.
You actually own the lot, right?
I own the lot.
And, and do you own just the lot between the cement building and?
Yes, that's the only lot.
Okay, and you'd be building the building at the back?
Yeah, at the back.
Of budding up to Wharton's?
Yeah.
And the alley.
Okay, so what if he came over to the edge of, or more towards, that gives you more distance between your house and...
Ma'am, I can guarantee you, once he gets approval on this, he is not gonna, he's gonna sell it. He's gonna sell it to Jesus and Eva. I'm telling you right now, they've already... Why was it Mr. McFarland at my door, telling me what he wanted to do? Why is Jesus at my door, at, you know, saying, hey, vote yes on this? I'm the one who lives there. If he's not the one who's, who's petitioning it or gonna build something, why is, why was he coming over to say vote yes? It's because he came here the first time, he was denied. So now he had Joe come over and petition it. They did a little deal where he sold him a little part, part of the property out back there so that he could eventually say, this is my property, I'm gonna go ahead and sell it back to you, and then, and then it's all Jesus and Eva's again.
And then what are they gonna do with it?
From what I understood, that they wanted to put an apartment above their business, but also possibly apartments, from what I heard, or little cottages on it, or a flea market also. I've heard all kinds of different things. He's never been straight with me about it.
But nothing, nothing...
And he's got the property now on Sinclair, where the houses are right now, so, and there's property next to that, that's up for sale, and I think there was some kind of deal where I'll give you this part of this property, and I'll cut you this property, you go and petition it, and you get the approval, because he's a well-known name in Kearns, and he's a well-respected gentleman, but I just feel it's not, as soon as he gets the approval, it's gonna be sold.
If, if I can, everything you said is speculation and it's not true. That is not true. This is something you dreamed up in your head.
No, it isn't. Why did Jesus come to my door?
I can't speak for him, but I've gotten to know them, him and his wife, and they appeared to me to be very nice people, and I've gotten to be somewhat friends with them, and all, I didn't know he did that. I can only assume, that's all I can do, is he was just trying to help. That's all I know. I did not put him up to go talk to anybody.
Well, when the last time this was up and it got voted down, he addressed us and said, why did you all not vote for it?
He asked for a, to put a RV on the lot.
Yeah, that's what he asked. He asked for an RV there. We denied it.
Right. And then now he's purchased the property on Sinclair, and then now all of a sudden, this back part of the property, which was Jesus's, is now Mr. McFarland's again. I don't understand it. I don't know what the deal was, but I just, you know, that's my home, too, and I would just like a little say-so in it, and it's a commercial lot, I understand. Build your shop. I just don't want a house there, too.
Okay, any other comments?
The people on the back, you were talking about the noise would be better, is it the back? Well, that's better for her, but it's not better for the Wharton's or the Darby's.
But the Wharton's are never there.
Yeah, they are, but they don't live there.
They mow.
Mm-hmm. And then there's one house between hers...
And yours.
So the further back you get, the more people.
But if he, if he puts it here, then...
Where's here?
At this side of his property, close to your house and close...
Close to the street.
Or if he puts it closer to, what is that, three oh nine first? I don't know.
No, it's his back side of the property, so it'd be more between the other side of the shop and my fence line, and this way going back to the alleyway is right here.
The alleyway runs between Wharton's property and your property. So if he puts the...
The alley runs behind the Wharton's and behind our house.
So it's, yeah, that's what I said. That's what I said, yeah, yeah.
East west.
Huh?
It runs east, east to west.
Yeah, that's what I said, yeah, yeah. So if he's building it more back towards the alley and the west side of the property, then it's further away from both properties, and it's gonna be inside. Is it gonna be that loud? I, I, I just, I need to get an understanding of...
You know, that's, that's really not the question, is how loud is going, he has every right to do.
He has, I know, I know.
But the housing is the part that's the question.
Right, okay, so...
Well, any more comments? If not, we'll call the meeting to order at seven fourteen. First item is the consent agenda, is the minutes of the previous meeting and budget review, and adjustments, paying, paying the bills.
I'll make the motion, we accept the minutes and pay the bills.
Okay.
All right. Y'all bear with me, I'm taking notes.
Yeah, ready to do it?
Next item is public comment. I've got three people signed up. Renee?
Oh, that's me. Good afternoon. I'm here on behalf of my sister, Catherine Collins, Mr. Mayor. She has a message she's recorded that she would like me to play for you, if that's okay? Apparently she's, she's tried to get a hold of you several times, but here we go.
Jeffrey Saunders, Mayor of the city of Collins, I am sorry and devastated that you are going to make time to speak with me. I have nothing but loving care and respect for you and absolutely no bad intentions on you or our near city. I'll share my thoughts with counsel tonight, although I am unable to attend. To my highly respected counsel, of Kearns City Council, this is a message I created for Mayor Saunders and have been unable to speak with him for the last two weeks. I only wanted to speak with you, to tell you face to face, that I apologize for the grief and inconvenience I've caused you. I honestly thought I was doing the best job I could. I was blind to many things, including my termination, and I know it's just a job, but I truly thought thirteen of us as a family, in a small town, that's just what you do. That's one of my flaws, and thinking of the questions and arguments, everything else can be forgiven, but that's what family does. I guess I was the only one who thought of us as a family, not just a job. I apologize for that. I let my personal feelings and care disrupt my professional plans, having I only seen that a few weeks ago. I always hope, all my coworkers, you, close to me forever, I walk on close to you all if you only ask. For me, fifteen years is hard to wipe away. Thank you for letting me work for the city in any capacity, through the years and questions and difficulties. I haven't toured my hometown. I didn't know it would try to make problems, and I'm sorry for that. I really, really didn't know. I was the loudest to that fault. I thought I gave the municipal government a little bit of edge or accountability because I asked questions. I didn't realize it would create the idea of animosity, chaos, toxicity, and cost me the high price of my job, my employment. I really didn't know I was creating chaos and problems, the city coordinating with the community organizations that helped make Kearns great. Had I known, I would have impressed them completely. I've reached out to every single contact I have, I've reached out through social media, and to this point, I have not received a single negative statement about me. I can't trace the source of the information, but I pray that the city doesn't have negative consequences as a result of me. Every event can be and should be successful, and I will continue to support that. I've always loved Kearns. The last fifteen years have been almost a dream come true, even with all the craziness. It was a life's dream to improve the city, and I had no idea that I, I alone was hurting it anyway. And again, had I known, I would do things differently. I do find comfort in growth improvement, in even the twentieth century improvements I was able to accomplish. Number one, I created a revenue budget that actually paid its own bills, rather than borrowing to make payroll within the year. Two, I created a balanced budget on revenue and general fund side that didn't rely on nonexistent fund balance, the general fund, the revenue fund. They didn't have to borrow any funds from any other fund to pay the fiscal year core costs of fees, and finally, that both could finally pay themselves each year. And number three, there, there was more construction housing in the last twenty-five years than in the last twenty-five years before. People actually want to build and live in Kearns now, and I was a part of that. Number four, Sonic, I know it's attached to a gas station, but I put endless hours into making that deal happen. Now Kearns has its first franchised business ever. And number five, Sonic, the love convenience store that it is, Kearns executed the very first tax, property tax abatement and sales tax rebate ever, ever. That's history alone, and I took care of that. I made the paperwork happen, the footwork, everything. Number six, water and sewer maintenance. Before I was the city secretary, the water system, sewer system was hatched together, it was mandated, and it was never improving, and it was just to keep things going. And I implemented a plan to properly maintain the systems. It was in my five-year plan for this to happen, for this to happen, for this to happen, and it was, it was successful. It wasn't to just repair, it's to improve the whole system. Our towers were in dire need of repair and reinstallation, and I made that clear to our branch administration firm, and they made it happen. I was willing to apply for an grant that nobody thought we'd get. Number seven, the city was out named on software.
We live at this two minutes, we're about five, six minutes in.
That's true. Thank you.
Krista Conley?
I've already said my...
You said your, please. David Forman? On time limit, two minutes?
Two minutes.
How fast?
Short. I'm here in support of Catherine. You know, I don't know what happened, because nobody's told me, but I've heard a lot of rumors. Don't put a lot into rumor, but some of them do disturb me. But I truly think that, that she loves Kearns, likes Kearns, like working down here. And my question is, was she given proper written notice of infractions? Or was she ever totally given what her duties were in writing? Something that she could go by? And you know, Kearns is a small community, but we're growing as our business comes, and we, I think, I'm in the private sector now, and out of poli-, not out of politics, but out of the government in things, but I still keep up with it. If she hadn't been given them notices, I'd like for you to have this counsel to consider keeping her on, but make sure she understands what her duties are. And if she hadn't been documented, as we have to do in the private sector, now government may not, but government rules city, unless y'all change, and I haven't read or know about it, but I think we've got too small of a population, I would like to see this counselor. I'm talking about the council, because they're the ones in control. They'll give her another shot, but make sure she understands what the duties are, because I think that might have been some of the problems. I know in the past, there's been stuff about her stepping over to other fields, but was she ever told not to? Because at one time, this city had a city administrator, and I think under the bylaws of the city that they're governed by, they're still supposed to have a city administrator, because I've never read, seen, or heard anything where that was done away with. So she may have assumed that she was administrator, and apparently, there are people sitting here that doesn't think she is.
And that's correct. I'm sorry to interrupt you. That's correct. She was told when she first hired, got hired on and replaced Cindy, she was going to be doing this, and then six months, a year, two years later, no, she wasn't.
This is his time.
I know, but I'm adding to his.
I don't want you to add things. I want to speak for myself. I've been here for many years. My wife and I have put tens of thousands of dollars into this community, and still do it. I think, from what I'm hearing, I don't know if all of it's true or not, I think she needs to be given another shot, and this counsel makes, needs to make sure that she understands her duties. And that's, I'd love to ask some questions, but I know in this forum, I cannot. I'd have to be on the agenda, and I'm not on the agenda. Thank you. All right.
So questions aren't allowed?
No, if you sign up for public comments, we got public comments. All right, we'll move to the first agenda item. Discuss, consider resolution by Encore Electric Delivery proposed rate increase. There it is, anybody wants to read it?
This is getting a little advanced notice.
This is the one that the committee that, can't remember the name of it, the one we, that represents us in these rate cases, will be fighting it, I'm sure, I don't know. My thoughts are to, tonight, with the, I can't remember the name of that. The rate, oh God, is that steering committee thing, isn't it? Steering committee. Handle that. So I'm in motion to deny.
I vote to deny.
Second.
All over in favor? All right, next item is Caitlin. I have appointed Caitlin Cotton to complete Darren Lane's unexpired term. Unexpired term as a member of the Kearns City Council. I need y'all to approve that, if y'all approve.
I make the motion, we consider the appointment of Caitlin Cotton to the city council.
Second.
All those in favor? All right, now you get to where you're... Read. As you raise your right hand, now we both see.
You just want to read them. I, Caitlin Cotton, do solemn and swear, affirm that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of city council of the city of Kearns, Texas, and will do well to the best of my ability preserve, protect, and defend the constitution and laws of the United States and of the state of Texas and of the city of Kearns, so help me God. It's hard to read. I, Caitlin Cotton, do solemn and swear, affirm that I have not directly or indirectly paid, offered, promised to pay, contributed, or promised to contribute any money or thing of value, or promised any public office or employment as a reward to secure my appointment or confirmation thereof, so help me God.
There you go. If you will sign both of yours. Can you have your seat?
Woo-hoo.
Yay.
Watch my ball.
Thank you.
All right. Caitlin, if you have any questions, stop us and ask us.
Okay.
We will.
I'm sure I will have some.
Uh the next item is discuss, consider request for a specific use permit to allow multi-use zoning for residential manufacturing, commercial on lot. Currents lot, OT block fifty-seven lots five through eight located two oh four southeast first, city of Currents.
Now my question right now is this, if he wanted to right now, he can build a shop.
Yes.
No question.
Yeah.
Okay.
And what he's asking for is to change it to multi-use where they could uh put in residential. And which would mean the commercial and residential would be there.
Well, if I live where these people live, I'd rather have the residential than, than the shop. But are y'all against the house? I'm not understanding what y'all are against.
What I was informed that was gonna happen is that it was gonna be an apartment above his shop originally. And then I was informed he was gonna possibly have little single dwellings like apartments and rent them out. Well, he's already got across the street on Sinclair behind that house, two mini tiny sheds, already fully equipped with water, everything. And I don't know if they plan on moving that over there as soon as he sells it. That's what he's gonna do and then he's gonna have little homes along with the shop. Multi people.
I don't recall you being at the last time.
I wasn't.
Okay. Um but my husband and I were and it wasn't in just her imagination that she came up with stuff. Because none of us could figure out and Jeffrey did a, a really good job of trying to nail him down in terms of what it is he was wanting to do and coming up with, and then it was move the RV or the trailer from inside the McNeese building to outside and do this and that. But it was clear that, and he said apartment, he said all kinds of multi things. I'm only speaking for myself, but I have talked to the Whartons and a lot of the neighbors and we all feel real similar. That area is not prime real estate to begin with. But we don't want any more junk over there or more stuff, whether it's manufacturing, whether it's uh commercial, whether it's residential. We live there and we don't want lots of other things there. And noise level and whether he backs up to the cyclone fence, which will drive my husband and I nuts as well as our critters and all the way, anywhere you put it on that lot.
Yes, exactly. And my back windows are back there.
You've just, you've just covered every res- every zoning we have. You said not residential, not commercial, not.
I don't want more stuff there, okay? And I'm like her, it's not her imagination. This has been going on at least two years. The last time this all came up. And I don't like all those little houses that have been put.
Behind the Sinclair house.
Yeah. It's like, and I've seen countless police officers drive by and look and try to figure out what they're doing. And we've all, in the neighborhood have all watched it. And it seems to be legal, but it's not okay to have all these little houses and whatever you call it. But no matter what people call it, once something is approved, then they do what they want to do.
Okay, but it's commercial now.
Yes.
And he can put a shop there and you can't remember about it, right?
That's what I understand.
Right.
So if we leave it as just commercial, you can still put your shop there.
Right.
And it can be addressed at a later point if it comes to the, to the point that we're gonna add a residential house, right? But we could leave it as is now for your shop and you wouldn't have little houses. So I mean, that, that seems like a win-win.
It, it's uh, yes, it was January twenty-four when he asked for that.
Was it?
Yeah.
And I was thinking it, I knew it had been over a year.
I just wish we knew exactly what he wanted to do with it.
Yeah.
You know, if he'd be straight up.
But you can't do anything with it if it's commercial. You can just, you can't build a, you can't put a residence there.
Correct.
If it's solely commercial. So that solves your problem.
Correct. And that's why I don't want, understand why he wants it residential uh as well. Because he's purchased the land there right across the other side of my house on Sinclair and has a house and two little shacks behind it or little tiny homes behind it. Why would he need more residential?
I don't own that. It's not mine. I own, the only lot I own in Currents is the lot that we're talking about.
How big is that?
Yeah. I'm telling you. It's Haysoos. He's gonna sell it right to Haysoos because he's the one who owns the shop right here, the building.
Ma'am, let him talk. Let's one at a time. The thing is, the way, even for multi-use, if he wanted to put a trailer house in there, he'd still have to come back.
Right.
Because that would require.
Because if I wanted to build a house there, I'd have to have it permitted.
Right, right.
So I couldn't come back and say, I want to put four tiny houses on it because they all would have to be permitted and you could just shoot it out.
Am I understanding, isn't there some issue about the utilities that are under?
It's across the street. That's a different problem.
Okay.
As is, he can build a shop right now.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's the way I stand with it. So I make the motion, we deny a specific use permit for multi-use zoning.
My second.
All in favor, deny.
Deny.
Five oh.
It stays the way, when you came in, it stays the same.
And it doesn't mean he can't come back.
I understand that. He can do that, but we'll deal with it then.
No.
You did get my proposal that had somewhat of a rough outline of what I was wanting. Had a sketch diagram?
Not in the file.
Yep, turned it in in my application. A kind of a CAD drawing. It's rather simple, quite modest, nothing spectacular.
But at least it's a plan. Do you see the neighbors concerned about never having, I mean, it's, it's been pretty loosey-goosey for the last two years.
Just looks like it?
Let me see what the addresses are.
It doesn't look like it.
No, no, there's something else. No, that is not it.
There were nine letters, six back, five back against one.
Five against.
Okay. All right, we'll move into operations. Get your code in for the next report.
Thank y'all.
Thank you guys very much.
Here you go, just for the record.
No.
Bobby, I, just a quick question. On most of the stuff, was this all stuff that the property owners took care of when you, after you?
Yeah.
The property owners, we didn't have to get anybody, property owners to handle most all this stuff?
Yes, they have done it.
Okay. Okay.
I don't know how that.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Water department. He'll look back, we did real good. So we did more gallons than we bought. Heard it. Um we reread the course, kind of meter is something on our side, the system is not right. Gotta take a little investigating, we'll figure it out. Sure, nothing new. Free department, patch and pottos when we get the asphalt. Police department.
We had thirty-six reportable incidents, that's including offenses, three major arrests. Uh the reports we have taken, they're all minor. We got two major cases going on right now, one child abuse case and one narcotics case. And we had thirty-one citations over the month of September. That's a low number. But we've got, we've been working two major cases through, throughout September.
They have court coming up?
We'll get a court.
Tomorrow?
Friday.
When the ten?
The ten. Tax department, I know we had got a report from them. Office, nothing new there. Grants. We are still waiting on a logo for that north tower. They have sent three so far that have been wrong. We've sent them the measurements, they're still wrong. Um our diaphragm valve that controls on and off on that tower. Uh they took it out to care it to repair. It was beyond repair. So we're gonna have to buy a new valve. It's been ordered for two weeks. It should be here anytime. Uh once we get it back in, we'll be able to, we can go ahead and, and sanitize and put the fill it with water and put it back online. They can paint the logo with it, with it online. But uh, lookie, the guy that subbed that worked on this is actually working on a tower in Tennessee Colony, so he's close by. And it will take him a day to paint the logo, maybe two. But that's a status, actually the grant part of that has been finished. It was all the grant money went to this tower. This is the COVID money. You noticed the next link's put their stuff back on it. Uh it's actually all wiring is running conduit uh on the tower this time. They had multiple cables zip tied and uh inspector, when we fore- him started on it, said they had to put it in conduit, but all that seems to be good. EDC, KCDC. This is uh tenth month. EDC won't meet this month. KCDC has moved their meeting up a day to Wednesday, the last Wednesday of the month. Anything else?
Uh banners were written, ordered for the ten blocks. Uh rank for playground is in motion. I think that's it. We're like officer, we say.
Yes, be officer, like some of them.
I think that's all. It is.
Long where he's planning and nothing else.
Yeah. The motion to the general.
All in favor?